I want to call the meeting to order for the Board of Aldermen for the City of Warrenton, November 5, 2013. Would everyone stand and face a flag for Pledge of Allegiance? Melody Rue will lead us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is approval of the regular board meeting minutes from October 15, 2013. Are there any corrections or concerns with the minutes?
Motion for approval of the minutes for the 2013 meeting.
Second. Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Clark for the approval of the regular board meeting minutes from October 15, 2013. Roll call, please.
Alderman Dyer.
Yes.
Alderman Flake.
Yes.
Alderman Cornell.
Yes.
Alderman Flack.
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. Item 3B, Special Board Meeting Minutes of October 21, 2013.
Motion to approve a special board meeting minutes for October 21, 2013.
Second. Motion by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Dyer to approve the special board meeting minutes of October 21, 2013. Roll call, please.
Alderman Flake.
Yes.
Alderman Cornell.
abstained, I was not present.
Alderman Flack.
Yes.
Alderman Ock.
Yes.
Alderman Flack.
Yes.
Alderman Dyer.
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero with one abstention. Item four is hearing from the public. At this time, we give anyone from the public the opportunity to come forward and address the Board of Aldermen. We ask that you limit your remarks to five minutes or less, and please keep your remarks civil. So if anyone would like to talk or address the board, please do so at this time. Not hearing from anyone from the public, we'll extend that same courtesy to the Board of Aldermen. If any of the board members have something to say to the public, do so at this time. We'll start with Alderman Clark.
I'd like to thank everybody who attended the Arbor Day. It was a nice day out there, and Brad got all those little trees planted. Thank you.
I think the community did a great job over Halloween, so there are a lot of organizations
that really participated with the tree or treat and trunk or trunk and treat.
I do want to say it kind of knocked down, the people came to my house, so that was a bit of a drag, but I think the community overall did a really good job at that, so I think that's a good sign for our community.
I do have one thing. Since you brought up community, I think it's a great time. Agapi Ministry runs the Salvation Army Bell Ringing, and they're looking for volunteers. It's a great way to participate in the community, it's a lot of fun. Put reindeer ears on your dog, go down there and stand with the bells. You meet a lot of people you haven't seen for a long time. It's a great holiday experience, so if you're interested in doing that, I encourage you to contact them and sign up, because it really makes you feel part of the community and gets you in the season.
Good. Alderman Cornell.
Lovely.
Alderman Flake.
What does think over almost the past year, we've devoted almost all of our time to supplying information and working with personnel from the State Auditor's Office concerning the state audit. The audit is completed, the State Auditor made his report, and gave the city a good reading, and it is what it is. I just think it seems like it's time to start moving the city forward and address the normal and day-to-day issues and get our city back on track.
That's a good comment. I agree with you. Alderman Dyer?
Nothing.
Nothing? On the mayor's report, I just have a couple small items here. I agree with what Alderman Clark said about the tree memberage program. I think Alderman Flake and Alderman Clark were able to attend along with myself. A good, very good program. I don't want to, I don't know if Brad's going to report on this later or not, but it's a memberage program where a member of the community has the opportunity to purchase a tree for a loved one, a friend, relative, neighbor, what have you, and plant it in one of our three parks. The trees are about two to two-and-a-half inches caliber at the time of planting. I assume that we're planting the trees or the nurseries are planting the trees.
We will still be planting.
You will have a sign or a dedication on it as who we want to remember and maybe who the sponsor is of the tree. I believe the cost is $240 per tree. Guys are guaranteed for one year on it. If something happens to it in that first year, they replant it at no charge. I think it's a good program. I hope the community gets involved in that and supports that. Good program. The other morning on Arbor Day, last Friday, I believe, when we planted some trees out front, enjoyed that. The other thing I had, Alderman Ock talked about the Agapi situation, and we have a letter from the Agapi Executive Director who recently resigned her position, and for the public interest, I've asked Melody to read that letter for the public, if you don't mind.
Dear patron, enclosed you will find a copy of our annual report for fiscal year 2013, which ended June 30, 2013. We are sending this to you because you have made a donation of time, goods, services, or funds to Agapi Ministry during the fiscal year. We believe that the people whose generosity makes our ministry possible deserve to know how their donations are being spent. I also want to take this time to announce my resignation as Executive Director of Agapi Ministry. It has been my very great honor and privilege to lead this wonderful organization and the exceptional people who compromise the staff and volunteers, but after 10 years, it is time for me to move on. I am leaving the organization on sound financial footing with a strong board, knowledgeable and competent staff, and dedicated volunteers. On September 27, I will have handed leadership of the agency over to the interim director, Carleen Williams. Over the coming year, the Board of Directors, under the leadership of Reverend Kerry Gates, will conduct a search for a permanent executive director to lead the agency into the next decade, always fulfilling our mission of helping the hungry, hurting, and homeless of Warren County. Change is hard, no one likes it. I want to reassure you that Carleen and the Board of Directors has a transition plan in place, a plan that ensures the continued success of the agency and continuity of its mission. Please join me in welcoming Carleen to Agapi and give her all the support you have afforded me over the years. On a personal note, I wanted to thank all of you for your generous support of both Agapi as an organization and me personally. I have always said that Warren County will support Agapi as long as Agapi supports Warren County. I have never been disappointed in the people of Warren County. It has been a good 10 years for me, and your support has played a key role in my success as Executive Director. From my heart, I thank each and every one of you.
Thank you, Melody. Agapi's a good organization, and since the city is a supporter of Agapi, I thought it was appropriate that we read that letter, and we'll probably miscap it. I have another letter, a short letter, from China House Buffet that I want to read. Says, "To the City of Warrenton, City Council, Tourism Commission, and Melody Rue. Lynn and myself would like to express our thanks and gratitude for the $600 that was awarded to China House Buffet for using the Missouri MoDOT attraction signs at the Warrenton I-70 exit. We also are most appreciative of the increase from $400 last year to the $600 this year. We also want to thank Melody Rue for the help she has provided this year, as in years past during our application for these funds. We continue to enjoy being part of the Warren County community." So. And the only other thing, let's see. I have one more item that I was going to mention. Alderman Flake mentioned that we need to put the audit behind us and move forward, but our friends at Channel 2 News are, they don't quite see it the same way, and they've requested that they come out and interview us, I believe, the 15th of October at 12:30 here in the city chambers. Not sure what they want to talk about. It seems to be audit-related material, so I've accepted that invitation, and we'll see what Mr. Davis has to say. Next thing that I have on the mayor's report, I have an opening on the Planning and Zoning Commission. I've talked to, actually, I talked to Scott Schoenfeldt about a year ago, that he has some interest in the city government and had even considered running for city alderman. My suggestion was, why don't you serve on one of the city inner boards first and kind of helps you get up a little faster of what goes on in city government. So Scott's available now, and I have an opening that I'd like to appoint Scott Schoenfeldt to the Planning and Zoning Commission, resident of the City of Warrenton. I'm not sure how many years he's lived here. Do you know Alderman Cornell?
Four, four years or so.
Four years or so, so.
He's worked in the community for 10?
10 years.
Yeah.
Okay. And I think last time, they just got a new child, and it wasn't good timing, so this time it's a little better timing for him. So if there's any other questions or anything, I'd ask for a vote from the board to appoint Scott Schoenfeldt to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Make a motion to approve the mayor's appointment of Scott Schoenfeldt to Planning and Zoning.
Second. Motion by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Dyer to approve the mayor's appointment of Scott Schoenfeldt to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Roll call, please, Melody.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Flack?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Flack?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. And you'll notify Scott?
Special.
In fact, I think he has a meeting Thursday night. Is that right?
Bring him on in.
And Alderman Cornell's going to be here to introduce him to the board, since I can't be available. Thank you. And that's all I have. So I'm ready to move on down to item seven, Presentation of Audit Results from Alan Schulz and Company.
Good evening. My name's Alan Schulty. I'm here to present the financial statement audit. We'll call it the good audit tonight.
We're ready for one of those.
We've done the audit for a number of years. You know, all I can say is that this is probably one of the better audits I go on. The records are in perfect shape. I can't remember the last time we made a financial statement audit adjustment, so you guys are getting good information, and quite honestly, this is one of my probably favorite audits, because it's just in that good a shape.
Would you repeat that? Powder.
So I was just going to hit a few kind of financial statement highlights for the year, kind of comparing things to last year. The one downside of governmental financial statements is there's not a lot of comparison from this year to last year, and so I usually try to kind of hit those things. Total sales tax for the year was down about $37,000. That's across all funds. Property tax was up about $29,000, $22,000 in the general fund, and about $7 in the park fund. Other taxes were up about $70,000, and that's going to be your utility taxes and other non-sales tax. Charges for services were down about $30,000 from last year, and that was mostly due to that water shortage back in 2012 summer, so the pool was closed for a couple weeks. You guys missed out on some revenue there. Fines were down $55,000 compared to last year. From our kind of conversation about that while we were out here, it seems mostly to the fact that people are just kind of obeying the law a little more. You know, they know where some of the areas are that are heavily patrolled, you know, which is what you'd rather have. You'd rather have the corrective action as opposed to, you know, everybody getting a fine. Total expenditures increased by less than 1 percent. You guys are doing a good job of controlling costs there. Street expenditures were down about 15 percent, and that was mostly due to the expiration of that Walmart agreement, where you guys were helping them with some of the infrastructure, with the sales tax agreement. I know it probably goes back a little ways, but that ended during the year, so there was no more expenditures related to that. And then that was kind of offset by an increase in capital expenditures, so other road improvements and things like that during the year. Water and sewer revenues increased about 3 percent, and expenses were up about 11 percent, and the big drivers there were kind of some unexpected repair and maintenance things, and utilities had increased a fair amount over the prior year. So any questions about any of that?
Any questions for the board?
About what you just said?
Yeah, I was going to talk about the graphs real quick, if there are no.
Yeah, I mean, I do have some things to point out, but.
Okay.
I'm going to do a little page up.
All right. And we did put three graphs in the financial statement, or in the management report, and the management report is kind of just kind of a generic. We don't really have anything that we thought that needed to be addressed, so there's no recommendations in there this year. The first graph is general fund revenues, and I was just going to kind of, it gives you a five-year comparison, so to kind of tell you where you were five years ago compared to now. Sales tax is down about $70,000, or about 2.5 percent in '13 compared to 2009. Utility taxes are up $125,000, or 31 percent, most likely driven by the increased cost of utilities. Property taxes were up $28,000, or about 10 percent. Charges for services had a pretty significant jump, 76 percent, mostly due to you guys billing for trash now. Licenses, permits, and fines were up 80 percent, $250,000, and that was mostly taken court in-house back from the county. So that was kind of the drivers there. Expenditure-wise, not a whole lot of big changes. Culture and rec is down about 14 percent, and streets were down about 14 percent, and police had an increase of 21 percent, and again, that kind of related to the cost of bringing court in-house.
And for the record, I mean, we can see it here, but for the public, you're comparing since 2009.
Yes, I'm sorry.
No, you said it, but I don't, I want to make sure everybody heard that. The numbers don't seem too dramatic from 2012 at all, or even 2013.
No, yeah, and 1 percent overall change, so. The last graph is the water and sewer fund. There, over the five-year period, you'll see an 11 percent increase in revenues and a 14 percent increase in expenses, so they're tracking pretty well with each other. All right. Any questions?
Yeah, we had a conversation earlier. I've been talking to Terry about the audit, asking questions most of the day, but we've been talking, I talked about it earlier. One thing I asked to see if we could change the audit next year, we'd be to break out the capital sales tax fund, so you could find it, because it's a question that comes up periodically to me, is, okay, we have this designated fund, and right now it's included in the general fund numbers, and there's, note the references out on page four when Melody is, not Melody, but Gabrielle's writing. So it's in there, and I asked if we could consider breaking it out so people could see it different. Years ago, we used to have a double-wide sheet that had every fund listed, so it was easy to see where the funds were. So if you could consider doing that, I think that'd be very helpful.
That should be no problem.
I think I've told people before, I've probably been audited over 100 times in my life, various audits, so this is my bailiwick. You know, I think the thing you look for in an audit is these magical words. "In our opinion, the information fairly stated in all material aspects related to the financial statements is correct."
Yes, and I'm sorry, I usually say that at the beginning, and I.
And that's really what you're looking for. Their opinion is that the stuff has been presented fairly, so as you read through this, you get it, it really does represent what was going on in the city in a fair basis as you take it as a whole. You also like to read stuff like, "There was no difficulties encountered during the audit." You like to read, "There's no material misstatements." It's always nice to hear when there's no audit adjustments, although that's not the end of the world. Sometimes those things do come up. So I think overall, I mean, to me, the numbers that I looked at that were particularly important was the reserve numbers, and what I focused on, the audit started on page 18, you know, so our general fund ended up having a surplus from activity this year of $339,000. You also want to see a positive, you don't want to see a negative. And then when you go over to the proprietary funds, which basically is water and sewer, and that had a surplus of $447,000, which is positive, because you don't want to be running deficits in either one of those operations. So I think that speaks well. I also look at the reserve, what kind of unrestricted amounts, the reserves are healthy. So I think it, I thought it reflects the city's in pretty strong financial position.
Yeah, I mean, you know, one of the things you can always look at, too, especially general fund, is, you know, the fund balance in relation to total expenditures, and that's on page 18, too. You know, you can see, you have almost a $4 million fund balance compared to $5 million in expenditures, so you're almost at a full year's worth of expenditures in your fund balance. So, I mean, you know, that shows that you can weather some, you know, rough time if you need to. And you guys aren't a heavy property tax political subdivision, so, you know, you're getting income every month, whereas, you know, a city that relies much more on property tax, you know, they get it all at one time and have to stretch it out for a whole year. So, you know, you guys get much, the most significant amount of your taxes from sales or utility, so you constantly have money coming in.
So I think, I mean, I think it's appropriate to recognize the effort Gabrielle did on this. I know when the auditors come in, it's always extra work and the top of your duties, and you try to stick them in a place that's not too comfortable to work, so they get in and out and get their stuff done, and it's nice to hear the things were in good order, so that's all the comments I have. The other comment, I'd like to see, and I don't know if we could do this, if we could, you know, a lot of non-for-profit organizations put their financial statements on their internet, so you click on it. I think that would be really helpful, if we could have a place where people could, is there, I assume you can have electronic version of this?
Yeah, did we give you a PDF?
I don't think we have that yet.
Okay.
Yeah, I need to be good for transparency. If we could put the PDF out there.
Not a problem.
And we could put it on the website, so people want to read the details of the audit, see it, and ask questions, that it's there for them, they don't have to feel like they have to come down and ask questions. It's easily accessible, and I think a lot of organizations do that, and I think we need to follow suit.
Sure.
That is definitely no problem.
That's all I have.
Any other questions for Alan?
Do we need a formal motion to accept the audit, or is that not?
We've never done that before, or not in many years, I should say.
Okay.
All right, we thank you. I mispronounced her last name, I said Schulz, it's Schulty?
It's Schulty.
All right, sorry about that.
Yeah, it's quite all right.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate your presentation.
Yeah, thanks again.
I'm on item number eight of the agenda, Property and Liability Insurance Update on Earthquake and Liability. We had a discussion when we accepted property and liability bids last week about maybe increasing that earthquake coverage or changing deductibles, and Julie, you want to address that to the board?
Yeah, during the meetings last week, we definitely did kind of hash around the earthquake a little bit. So what I did is, after I met with Terry and Brandy, we discussed going to Savers, seeing if they had a deductible comparable to the one, the $25,000 deductible. And Savers does not offer a differing deductible other than the 10 percent. The good news of that is, the premium associated with that earthquake is very minimal, so the premium is $1,873. That's for that 10 percent earthquake. If we take, if we remove earthquake, that's the amount that you would be saving during the calendar year. However, the one thing that it was a little bit, I maybe didn't do a good enough job of explaining, is how the 10 percent works with Savers. Right now, with having $10 million, or over $10 million in the property, the 10 percent looks like it's a million dollars, and that would be true if everything was affected. Every building, every, all property was affected, including your business personal property that's inside the buildings. So what, how it works is, if there's an earthquake, and it's not a big earthquake, but some of our older buildings get impacted, that maybe is a little bit of a more solid structure, and it's a $100,000 building. The deductible is not the million dollars, it is 10 percent of that specific building. So in that particular case, it would be $10,000. Similarly, if there was four buildings that were damaged totally, a million dollars, then yes, it would be $100,000 on that. So it is varying depending on what building is really impacted by the damage. So I think that's really important to note, because I don't, a lot of times, like especially on your homeowners, you, the reason it works that way is because, I mean, that's your home, that's all you had, that's the one building, and so, yeah, you're out that entire amount, whatever your deductible is, which is typically 10, 15 percent. So I wanted to at least, you know, bring that up, so that way you guys had the option whether or not you wanted to move the earthquake, know what the options were for the deductible and the premium that's involved.
So the $1,873 is a total charge for the earthquake?
Yes. The reason that it's so drastically different is we didn't have a $25,000 deductible. So therefore, you know, when you're spreading out among the, all the properties, yeah, it gets kind, it can be expensive if they're all impacted. So you have to look at the fact that, I know, a couple of you have even addressed that, it's not a huge deal to you to have earthquake on your own personal stuff, but you'd like to have some earthquake on, you know, the city's stuff. You got to take a little bit more proactive approach. This gives you an opportunity to have that at a much lower cost. I mean, you're looking at, you know, 1,800 versus just 14,000, just for the, you know, $7 million that they were adding to it. So there's a huge difference, but it's because there's a difference in the deductible, and that can't be denied, so.
And I think I told you this, or told the board this the last meeting, you know, if it was my personal property, I would gamble not having earthquake, but I won't gamble with the public's money and their investment in the thing, so it'd be my recommendation we leave the earthquake as is, so.
And it's already included in the bid, so we don't need to do any changes from a motion standpoint on that.
You're in agreement with that?
Yeah.
Alderman Ock?
Yep.
Alderman Flack?
Fine.
Fine?
Absolutely. Fine.
I think we're going to leave it as is.
Okay.
All right.
And then the other thing that we talked about, if it's okay, was the increase in the public officials liability, and the other carrier had offered a $2 million, $4 million coverage on that, and so we went back to Savers and said, okay, to add, to increase the coverage from 1 million per occurrence with a 1 million aggregate, what will the premium be if we increase it to 2 million with a $4 million aggregate? Pardon me?
You, okay, what did you just say, 1 million to 2 million? Did you say 1 million aggregate?
It is a 1 million aggregate.
1 mil aggregate?
Mm-hmm. Currently. That's all we requested, isn't it, 1 million, 1 million, right? I believe so. Okay. With that, so we looked at increasing it to 2 million with a 4 million aggregate, and that's on the public officials and the employer liability limits. So, and to increase those premiums like that would be $738 total for the both of them. And that was one of the things that was, I sensed to be a concern, so we talked about it, and we wanted to present that to you to see what your options are, what you guys wanted to present that to you to see what your options are, what you guys wanted to do with that. I don't know if you guys got the memo. Did?
Yes, yeah, I'm looking at it.
You're looking at it. Sorry.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm a big fan of increasing those limits.
Really?
$738. That's.
So the 2 million, 4 million?
Yeah.
And I'm just curious, why are you a big fan of that?
Well, because I, I have an umbrella in my own personal for a million. And look at all the liability we have for the city. If I have a million dollar for my own home, why wouldn't I want to get a little bit more protection for the city with the exposure the city has?
Okay.
Comments?
And we're in insurance. But it's, it's hard not to want to just up that a little bit, just to make sure you got everything covered. And when you're looking at the dollars, it's not a huge amount to double the coverage. But with that being said, you have to look at what a typical thing is. So it's kind of a little trick bag. You got to, you know, decide what you guys want to do.
Comments on the board? Alderman Cornell?
You know, six and one, half dozen of the other. I believe that a million is probably adequate. And based on what Savers claims the average, average claims are costing, a million dollars should cover anything that we get ourselves into. That being said, $738 is not much to double the incident and quadruple the, the aggregate. So I don't know.
Alderman Flake?
I'm in favor of the increase.
Of the increase? Alderman Dreyer?
I'm really not sure, actually.
You can live with either one?
Yeah.
Make your motion.
You want the increase? Is that what you asked for?
Yeah, I get news reports every single day of claims that fall within this from city governments that are well in, over a million dollars. And, and maybe that's just lucky me because I get the reports from all over the country. But I would make a motion that we increase our limits to the 2 million per occurrence, 4 million ag, for an additional premium of 738.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Kessler, seconded by Alderman Flake to increase the liability limits from 1 million each person, 2 million aggregate to 2 million each person, 4 million aggregate. Any discussion? I know I cut Alderman Ock and Alderman Clark off. Do you have any discussion on that? As for roll call vote?
Alderman Kessler?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Fornell?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. We'll, we'll add the increased coverage.
I'll take care of that then. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Are we done with that coverage now?
For this year.
It's been a couple months until we start talking about how we're going to talk about it.
Yeah. We've got health coming up.
I don't like that stuff.
We received the notice today that the workers' comp renewal is coming up.
That's good.
I'm on item nine, signed regulation discussion regarding Home Builders Association and Cannon Builders. If you would like to come forward, I, I'm going to have you introduce yourself. I know Monty and Emily. So you tell the board who you are and who you represent.
I am Monty Cannon with Cannon Builders out of Troy. This is Emily Wyman with the Home Builders Association in St. Louis, the Eastern Missouri.
And I might give the, the board a little breakdown. We, we were able to meet with, with Monty and, actually, your son was, was part of that meeting. And Emily was kind of on a conference call with us at the same time. And, and we, we kind of discussed the issues a little bit. I think Terry was available and Melody, were you, no?
Michelle.
Michelle was available. Okay. All right. So we, we really suggested, they've done before the board and, and kind of presented their case to the board. And since you all have the final decision on things anyway, so here they are.
What we're here for is to discuss the, our ability to put out directional signs. These are the little two-by-two signs that we typically put up strictly on the weekends. The purpose for it is to try to direct traffic from different areas of the city to our subdivisions try sell single-family homes. It's very important to us. And it's, it's virtually vital to us. The subdivision that we currently have is Field to Dreams. It's out here on the south end of Warrenton next to the high school. And for us to get traffic from Interstate 70, which is the hub, down 47 and to that subdivision, it's impossible to get them to go there without some signage. We have done some signage out on 47 at that intersection there, but we've not come up through town. If you look in these other towns, you're going to find that they're allowing the builders to do that. What I'd like to do, and that's the purpose of what we're here for, is to kind of have that discussion. I think the first thing we need to do is maybe if Emily would give you some statistical information, what it means to a city, not just to the builder, but what new homes represents in dollars and cents and growth to the city. I will also give you some information. I was here about a year and a half ago and gave you some building permit information. And this is kind of updated of that. This information is for building permits out of Warrenton, Wright City and Troy. The reason I do that is that's where we're located with subdivisions. And I will give you kind of a bigger picture, broader picture of what some industry does in general.
Thank you.
One note, there's some notes out in the column. This is just a little bit of what we got today. This is not really a dig on the city of Warrenton. All I want to do is to maybe give you a little bit of a picture of what we get when we call different locations. To get information on this information here, to update it today, we weren't able to get the information on the city of Warrenton. You have a process where we fill out a two-page application, send it in, and then you give it to us in about two or three days. The other cities give it to us over the phone. We'll fax information to us and what have you. But it's not a dig at you. Don't take it that away. I'm, all I'm trying to show you is from the outside looking in, sometimes you see that different cities do things different ways. It's, you can kind of look through the comparison of the building permits from the different towns.
Well, first of all, I'll, do y'all have any questions on that before we move on to other home building issues? Thank you so much for your time and consideration tonight. It's very generous of you to open up your discussion to talk about sign ordinances. The Home Builders Association, we're here tonight to let you know that we are here, the builders are interested in the city of Warrenton, and we want to help your community grow. And we want to help invest in your community. But that's if you want us. Home building has many positive benefits. I believe each of you should have received a letter. If you don't have, received a letter explaining some of the benefits of home building, I'm happy to pass it around to you again. The St. Louis Home Builders Association, in 2009, we did an extensive review of what are the benefits of home building to a community. And in the St. Louis area, we found there are two levels of benefit to home building. The first is the immediate benefit the city receives in the first year of construction, when that home is initially built, when the workers are on the scene. And what you see in that first year is 115, oh, excuse me, $15,500 in taxes and revenue for local government, $211,000 in local income, and three jobs in the aggregate for one full year. That's just with one home being built. Now, the recurring benefits to the community for that one home are $6,000 every year in taxes and local government revenue, $30,000 in local income, and half a job. So half a job per home. So think about it. You build two homes in your community, you get one job. Two homes equals one job. Now, why are we here to talk about sign ordinances? Sign ordinances seem like a little thing, literally, a little thing. That makes a big difference. Without sign ordinances, many home, prospective home buyers cannot get to new communities. We are also used to Google mapping. We're so used to MapQuest. We're used to our GPS as being the point, that precise location. Turn left here, even 200 feet ahead, where are you really supposed to turn left? But oftentimes, because the new home subdivisions are not platted, they're not dedicated, they're not turned over yet, or because Google Maps is a little bit slow, a little bit behind, the satellites aren't quite scanning that area again, you don't quite have that luxury that we all have taken for granted. We all depend on. So those signs you see in the right-of-way are important. They may seem like little nuisances to those who already live in the community. But to a family looking for a new home, it may just be the arrow and the way that shows them how to get to their new destination, their new home, their way of investing and being part of you and your community. So please consider it. It's very important. The Home Builders Association, we're always here to work with you. In the letter, we get, we put out some parameters. The builders are not interested in just being able to post all of your right-of-ways, cover them with big obnoxious signs. We put some parameters in the letter for you. I'll go over them briefly. Signs would only be temporary. They'd be on weekends only. They'd be collected on Monday. I have heard from MoDOT personally that the signs are still there on Monday. They are MoDOT property and in the trash. Those signs, that, that actually is a pretty significant commitment for the builders. Those signs aren't cheap. For those of you who've ever done political signs, it's a costly event. They can cost up to $15 a sign. And that adds up if those are thrown in the trash every Monday. We propose that the signs shouldn't exceed four feet, four square feet. So they would stay small. They would stay out of the way. They would not be as, they would not impede safety. They would not impede any vision. No more than three signs in one location. Again, we're not looking to trash up the city by any means. We're simply looking to point people towards a good investment. Projects advertised should be within the city of limits of Warrenton. We're not looking to use Warrenton to get people elsewhere. Let's keep them here. Let's invest here. Annual fee, we're proposing an annual fee to the city of $100 to be able to do the signs. And the signs installed in the right-of-way would be subject to the approval by the city. So if you didn't like the way something looked, get rid of it. Make the builder change it. We, again, we just want to work with you. We want to try to sell homes in your community. We want to help you grow. Do y'all have any questions for me?
Got some general questions about the, I guess my, my question is, the, as it, as it pertains to putting these in the MoDOT right-of-way.
Yes.
Is it possible for you all to get MoDOT permission? Here's, here, here's my, here's my issue with it is, it seems like we have, have gone to great lengths to change and make our sign regulations in compliance with some of the newer court rulings as to what is constitutional free speech. And you're asking us to enforce or not enforce and, and violate our own, our own codes and, and the law. I, as far as regulating content.
What we're asking you to do is we're asking you to do what most cities do. And we've included in our handout a couple samples. If you want more samples, I can provide them to you. The HBA, we cover over 200 political subdivisions. I can provide you more examples. Now, I will tell you, "all" is not the word I will use here. "Most," the vast majority of cities and counties allow this. Now, the legality of it, that's, that's y'all's decision. That's y'all's prerogative. What I'm telling you is, from a builder's perspective, you are at a serious disadvantage if you don't allow directional signs. It's, they're, they're critical. Now, as far as MoDOT, I spoke with MoDOT this week.
Okay.
And I asked them. And they said, "It is federal and state law. Nothing is to be in the right-of-ways." Now, think about everything you see in the right-of-way, and what's allowed and what is kept and not confiscated. The little crosses, the memorial crosses that you see on the side of the highway?
Okay.
Illegal.
Okay.
Against federal law.
Okay.
Flowers you see, memorandums, everything, all of that, illegal. Garage sale signs, lost puppy, illegal. All these very benign things, including directional signs to subdivisions, they're all illegal. Now, most cities, vast majority of cities, still allow for it because MoDOT's explanation is, "We have bigger problems than lost puppy and home this way." And on the weekends, we don't have the staff. We don't have the interest in collecting them. So, you know, it's really y'all's decision on, do you feel beholden to make it your issue to worry about something that the regulated jurisdiction does not? Or do you find it, or is it your prerogative to try to get people to be able to find new homes? That's not, I, this is where I'm never jealous of elected officials. Y'all have hard decisions to make. It's, it's really just what, it's really just your decision. MoDOT has assured me that if my builders have a sign in the right-of-way on Monday morning, it is in the trash.
Counselor, let's see.
Well, if they're gonna, so wait a second. So they do have an interest. If they're saying, if on Monday morning, it is.
Not on the weekend.
Not on the weekend.
So they're gonna, they are choosing to enforce the regulations and laws Monday
through Friday, but not on the weekends?
Correct.
That's, boy, from.
That is what has been indicated to us. I will never speak for MoDOT. This is the explanation I received. So.
From a laws guy, boy, I, MoDOT may, MoDOT may take that stand. I'm from a laws, I, I don't know how you have your, how you have regulations or laws on the book and you willy-nilly decide when you may or may not enforce them.
Pretty slippery slope.
It's based on availability.
We do it every day.
Yeah.
It's done every day. The bottom line, the bottom line of it for us is, it is so important that we are able to do it, that it makes a difference whether we're here or not. Now, we currently have 38 lots that we need to sell in Field to Dreams. It's very important to us. When you spend $25,000, $30,000 a lot, you type a lot of money on it in a hurry. That's the type of investment we have. And that's why I'm interested in, in trying to do this. It's the reason I've been here for the last year and a half trying to get it done. But the bottom line of it is, is that is so important to us that it directs where I will end up putting people to try to sell homes. The lady that was in the, the house that we had out here in Field to Dreams is now in Wright City. And it's due to the fact that I couldn't put up these signs because I couldn't generate traffic to her. Now, in 2003, '04, '05, there was enough people moving around that it wasn't quite as important. We were able to get people to our places and didn't probably need these signs. Wasn't that we weren't using them in other areas? Because we were. So we weren't, didn't have them here, but we were still able to get some numbers out of the subdivision. So if I can get numbers out of the subdivision and not do the signage, believe me, I don't want to put up the signs.
Can you, can you put them, oh, can you talk to, I believe Steve Giancola owns the property along 47 there where you're talking about putting them? Can you ask that property owner? I, I'm also a property rights guy. Why can't you ask for permission to put the?
Most of the people that you ask for, I'm going to, I'm going to guess that they're going to say no. Another part of it is, time you get it off the right-of-way on the private ground, you're usually far net away from the traffic. These smaller signs don't show up that well.
That's why I put my political signs. And I ask for permission. I, I mean, I hate to be, I.
Well, can. I, I understand where you're coming from. I totally understand where you come from. But I hope you understand where I'm coming.
I, I do. I, I understand your dilemma. I, I don't understand the, the desire to ask us to ignore our own regulations, our own laws, and our own practices.
I guess what we're doing is asking you to do what any of the other cities around here are doing.
Okay.
And you're, you're not alone. I mean, the Home Builders Association, we have two meetings in two different city councils this week on sign ordinances. And the other ones, therefore, making them even looser. Because the cities are actually approaching us now saying, "We want to grow. HBA, work with us. Show us what, little things we can do, little ways we can change our ordinances to get home builders to come to my city first." And that's the conversation we're having Thursday night in the city of Chesterfield. And so it's, it's those kind of situations where you're not alone by any means. I mean, I could name dozens and dozens of sign ordinances, and every one is just a little bit different and a, a little bit specialties community. And we, we want to work with you. If there's specific things you have concerns with, if the concern is content and that kind of thing.
Concern is content. We got a letter in the last election cycle from the ACLU about how we were enforcing our sign regulations. I, I believe it was the ACLU, wasn't it?
Yeah. I mean, the, the historic, I want, I want to give a little background because, and your name's Emily.
Yes.
You're a part of the prior situation with Mr. Cannon. Because, Monty, we, I've worked with you, and I drafted an ordinance that was related to this. And what, what kind of came about is, and I want to give a little background for the public. It was Neighborhood Enterprises Incorporated versus City of St. Louis, a circuit case that really changed the law on sign regulation. Basically, and I want to read a quote from it, just so you guys have the correct information, from the case that essentially said, "If the words on a sign define, if there's word, if, if you have to look at the words on the sign to determine whether or not it's regulated, then its content regulation violates free speech," which is really a large departure from where we were before. So when we got the letter from the ACLU, we changed our entire sign ordinance. Temporary signs are temporary signs. And I think there's even some state statutes now that conflict with this a-circuit case. But what, what we, what I worked with Monty on, and what I drew up was basically a permit to put signs in city right-of-ways. Because those are city streets, city right-of-ways. And that's what the board prior said. Well, we don't want to tell, if MoDOT says, has a law that says you can't put them in there, we don't want to say, "Give them a permit to say you can." You know, what is that really, does that become a condemnation issue or a conflict of law issue or whatnot? And I think what's unique about this city is we had the issue with the ACLU on our regulations. Your letter says, Emily says, "The HBA allows temporary weekend directional signs for residential developments." The problem is, some of the examples you gave us, I think violate that a-circuit case. They may not have had issues with it, but some of the permit ordinances are for developers or whatnot. They become content regulations. And that's what I advised prior boards. I said, "Look, we have to revamp our whole sign ordinance. This is something that we have to look and we have to do differently with this permit. You can't empower one group and say developers are the only ones that can put signs in right-of-ways and have a, you know, a favored class and have an unfavorable class. So garage sailors, you can't put a sign in the right-of-way. You know, you can't do that. You can't do those two things. And you can't, like you said, well, you know, the content can be subject to approval. Well, a municipality can't do that. A municipality can't be approval, approving. A municipality can't be approving your content of your signs. And the problem would be, that's okay for HBA clients, but what about the developer that says, "I want to put something different," or something whatever, and we say, "Well, under our ordinance, you're subject to our approval, and we don't approve of your sign." Well, they challenge it. The city's on the hook for the constitutional violation of it. You know, so I think it's different in this city because of that. And I think one of the things I want to stress is, I worked with Monty. I mean, I met you last year. We worked on different regulations. We talked about this before. There was a historical issue of Highway 47 and all the signs that were going up there, which if you drive Highway 47, there's no signs in the right-of-way now, which was a complaint issue and a real issue. But we did develop an ordinance for city right-of-way, but that's not what you needed, Monty. That really was the point I wanted to make was, it's not as though you guys came to us and we just turned a deaf ear and said, "We don't want development in the city," Emily. I mean, Monty came, I sat down with him, we worked on an ordinance, we came up with it. You came to a couple of meetings, we presented it. I actually drafted it and presented it for city right-of-way, but for the state right-of-way, that was the real issue that kind of developed. So I just want to make that point, so the board has that historical aspect to it, and the public has the historical aspect with regards to sign regulations, what our signs regulates now. What I think are some of the issues of the examples that you gave us, I mean, quite honestly, I know the city attorneys from the cities of the examples you gave us, but under that St. Louis city case, it's very clear that, you know, if you have to look into the content such as direction or whatnot, it's a content-based regulation that's unconstitutional. And the reality of it is, like in the city of St. Louis case, it's not HBA that gets sued, it's the city of Warrenton that would get sued. And we were threatened with suit by ACLU because of a sign regulation related specifically to political signs that was different than real estate signs. So there is a little bit more in the background here than just the city saying, "We don't want HBA. We're not working with you. We're not trying to work with you." Because we did work with Monty. You know, I spent time working with you on it.
I'm not here to say it just didn't work.
I just want to make sure that's clear.
I understand.
That historical thing you said, "I've been here a year and a half," is kind of getting skipped over because, you know, we had a good working relationship.
We did, we did. No doubt about it.
Come up with a solution.
I know at that time, you had some other issues, and you looked at the entire ordinance. The only part of it is, your ordinance, I don't have a problem with, other than its location, and that's the key thing to us and obviously...
And I want to give one more historical background for the board. I'm sorry, Gary, I know you've been wanting to make a statement. What happened was, we had so many complaints on Mondays, and this was probably, what, six years ago, Terry? We had so many complaints on Mondays about signs being in MoDOT right-of-way, that the city, whether it was garage sale signs, wholesale signs, lost cat signs, whatnot, that the city actually contacted MoDOT and said, "There's a state statute that says you can't have any unpermitted signs in MoDOT right-of-way." And we said, "Do you guys have a problem if we basically enforce the state statute on MoDOT's behalf to remove these signs because it was so cluttered?" And so, and there were political signs that were in right-of-ways, there were homeowners who had signs in their right-of-way that were not political candidates. They supported, and they complained and whatnot. So, the city actually approached MoDOT and said, "Can we enforce the state statute?" And MoDOT gave us documentation saying, "Yes, you guys can enforce the state statute." And that's really how we kind of got to the point of enforcing MoDOT's statute on removing signs from the right-of-way.
So, again, the question was on the enforcement side to you. Because if our business isn't to enforce MoDOT, then in theory, anybody can put anything up on the state right-of-way, and we have absolutely no control over it.
Right. And the issue you get to it, Alderman, is, how can you say, once again, the First Amendment writes, "We're going to let these signs stay here, but these are the ones we're going to remove, or we're going to let these stay here, and these are the ones that are going to be removed?" Because at least the issue was, when we asked MoDOT for permission, it wasn't on Monday morning that MoDOT was coming to remove the signs. You know, it was really, they were perpetually staying up there.
Yeah. Because, I mean, to me, I've still got a lot of complaints on sign issues, more so than I ever thought. I don't know why, but, you know. And to me, one of the issues is enforcement. You know, we had a business person who had a sign up, I assume it was on the state right-of-way, part of the operation advertising a restaurant in Wright City for weeks that was never enforced. And then, we had a bunch of ladies in the Argus and Gill, and gentlemen, too, put up a temporary sign on the weekend to highlight their show, and they were told it was supposed to remove it. At the same time, the Masons had two signs posted, I assume it was in the state right-of-way, where their pancakes are. So there's a real... I mean, if we're going to take on the role of enforcement, would we, you know...
Well, if that affects five of people who are being told to take the sign down...
Well, the issue with the Masons was a different issue. It was actually, is it C-3?
RC-1.
RC-1. We realized, when we were going through the code and reviewing the sign ordinances, Jack realized that these temporary signs, real estate signs of any type, are not allowed in RC-1.
Right.
So we actually have an ordinance to put a moratorium on that, so we can allow those, those temporary signs in RC-1, because, you know, we didn't realize they weren't allowed in RC-1 because it's that kind of like high-use district. So, that is kind of a separate issue from the right-of-way. And I, believe me, signs, we've put off revising the sign code for so long because it gets so difficult when you get into it. Now it's so simplified, it just says, "You can have a sign this big. We don't judge content. We don't judge who is applying for the sign. This big, this is where it can go, this is where it can't go." I mean, I understand it's not exactly what you guys want, but we did, or HBA, or you want, Monty, but we did talk about permitting signs within city right-of-way with a permit and, you know, all the things that they were kind of looking for. I think that is at least a step in the direction. It may not be exactly what they want, but it's something that at least talks about a right-of-way that we can authorize, you know? And part of my issue is, the permit is us authorizing something in a state right-of-way that is restricted by Missouri law.
So, I guess from the economic development standpoint, I think we all agree that we would like to see growth in housing.
Yes.
I think we would all agree that we really shouldn't be trying to regulate what goes on, or permits that goes on state right-of-way. And, you know, we take a role of enforcement. But where is the middle ground? Because we don't own right-of-way down Highway 47. Where's the middle ground to accomplish this? As opposed to just saying, "Well, you can't do this," and we're going to walk away and say, "Sorry, too bad, go that." Where do we find some kind of middle ground to help a developer who's trying to accomplish what they're trying to accomplish?
And just, I drive through, I live just south of your development. And a couple of years ago, you all were putting up signs. I don't know if it was Cannon at the time. I don't have a problem with the appearance of the signs. And that developer, whether it was Cannon or the... or the... Warrior Ridge, was very good about, on Monday mornings, they were taking down their signs. They weren't leaving them up. That didn't go for the person who had a box advertising their yard sale. And all of a sudden, when you have to allow no enforcement or some enforcement, boy, no enforcement, that certainly doesn't bode well for our community. I've seen what no enforcement gets us. It gets us old signs left on the side of the road.
I can't disagree with what you're saying, but at the same time, you go to the communities of Fallon, St. Peters, St. Charles, Wensville, these signs are up.
Okay.
And so, let's try to find a way to get these signs up.
I've got not a problem.
Not all the things why we can't, we need to find how to do it.
Absolutely. Tell me how.
Evidently, we find from the other cities, I guess. The enforcement of it, we're going to have to put in here as a permit fee of $100. It's not much of a fee.
But how can we permit the ground we don't even own?
Exactly.
We don't own, we don't have a right, the city, to the highway departments. So therefore, we're permitting their use of...
Yeah. And I, you know, I've talked to Terry about this, and we talked about this a year ago. What can you do is, you know, I think there are conflict of law issues with, and like I said, I don't want to criticize any other city, and I think you said it from HBA's perspective, you know, what is illegal is a city's decision, because you're the ones that have to defend the suit for that one guy that wants to put a sign up. But the permit issue, I have an issue with. I think it's a conflict of law issue that I just don't think we have standing to permit somebody else to go and, to put into somebody else's property. It'd be the same thing as us permitting someone to go into somebody else's property. Like, you can go into John Smith's yard and put a sign because you have a permit. The thing is, is what I think it comes down to, if you say, "Hey, we want to be able to do this," from a city enforcement perspective, you cannot uniformly enforce it. So, do you go back to MoDOT and you say, "We're not going to enforce your statute anymore," and you let it, you know, become what it becomes and just, you know, see what happens? Maybe it's different now, I don't know. But Terry and I talked about it, is, we requested that permission from MoDOT. So, we can always go back to MoDOT and say, "Hey, we don't want to enforce your right-of-way regulations anymore," and just leave the enforcement to MoDOT. That's the other option you have.
Yeah. This, it seems like these topics, which seem so simple and so easy, should be slam dunk and simple things. And we've already spent quite a bit of time talking about it. And this is no disrespect to either one of you, I think this is an important issue. I'm going to make a motion that we table this discussion and gather more information as a board, and educate ourselves to figure out how we can get this done. I mean, I understand it's very important to get growth, I get it. I see both sides of it, but at this point, I don't have enough information to make a decision on how we solve this problem. So I'm going to make a motion that we table this, to continue this discussion at the next meeting.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Cassely, second of it, Alderman Dryer, to table the sign regulation discussion until the next meeting. Any further discussion?
Well, my thing is, with this, I don't want to be like the flea market or the farmer's market and regulate it so much to where they finally just leave town. We need businesses like this in town and people building in our area. And I really think we need to find a way, how these other cities are doing it, and accomplish this.
I agree completely, John. My point is, I think we have to figure out how to do it somehow, how we do it legally, and make it work. Because I don't want to see a whole bunch of other junk that I've been trying to mention every time I'm at one of these board meetings, our town is full of junk. So, I don't want to open the door and then we allow junk. You know, this is not junk. This is purposeful to get picked up, I agree.
The other cities are doing it, so there must be a way that it can be done.
But are they doing it by not obeying the law?
I don't care how they're doing it.
They're not doing it by...
I don't care how they're doing it. I just want to know.
So if they're doing it, if they're not, if they're doing it, but they're not following the law, you're okay with it?
I'm okay, because all the other cities are doing it.
But it's not, they're not...
Evidently, those are the ones who want it.
They haven't taken the role on being the enforcer for the highway department.
That's right.
That's the difference. If you can go down to, you know, Mid Rivers Mall in Mexico, and you can see zillions of these directional signs every weekend, it looks horrible, but the city has chose not to be the enforcer on those roads. And we've taken that role as being the enforcer.
Correct. And what I would be interested in, yeah, both Fallon and St. Peters can tell us how they're doing it and how they're also controlling their yard sale signs and their lost kitten signs. Absolutely, I'd be interested in that.
Well, then in the meantime, our economic development person should come back with his strategy.
Hey, it's your job. You want the buildings, right?
Yes.
You want the growth.
I have a motion on the floor. I'm going to ask for a roll call vote, so we can move on to other discussions.
Alderman off?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Jern?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Monty and Emily, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
I'm going on to add to another issue, construction dumpster discussion. Did I skip one here? No. Who's addressing that?
I will. So, we were asked last meeting to kind of go back to our research, to look at some of the questions that were brought up about construction dumpsters. Basically, what we looked at is, we found, cities fell essentially into one of two categories. The first category was, basically, they had two types of permits, which is like, similar to the ordinance that we proposed, where you had an open building permit, you were allowed to have a dumpster during the time your building permit was open. However, they had regulations such as, you had to have it enclosed in a, you know, site proof fence, it had to be covered, whatnot, whatnot, as part of the open building permit for the dumpster permit, okay? If I didn't do this yet already. The other side of it was, there were cities that just had a dumpster permit, 30 days, you had to come back and ask for extensions. It didn't matter if you had an open building permit or not, okay? So there were really two categories. One had two types of permits, the other one had just a dumpster permit. So, there really is not a great solution to the questions you guys asked. Alderman Cornell, one of the questions you asked was, "Well, if they're going to have it there six months, how come it's not enclosed?" Well, for example, city of Clayton, if you have an open building permit, you have a dumpster out there, you have to have it enclosed, in site-proof fencing. Most, well, a lot of cities that had dumpster permit regulations, had one permit for dumpsters, and you got it for the initial term, you had to come back and seek renewals and get renewals over time, which would be something that a builder, for example, would have to do for every dumpster in each lot that they were building on. So it was essentially the two ways we saw these things come down with other cities. And so, we wanted to report back to you on it.
So, the solution for the dumpster at the home that everybody's complaining about is build a permanent structure around the dumpster.
Well, it was temporary, but it was...
You're enjoying it.
Well, there was a description of a chain link fence with site-proof slats and whatnot. It's like, well, is that better? You know, are you just building on top of building on building?
Is your dumpster gone?
It'll take them six months to build an enclosure around the dumpster.
And then they'll take another six months to get it removed after the dumpster's gone.
If somebody asks, "Can't move the dumpster, gone?"
Is it gone? I haven't been by it lately.
I know Jack was doing a bunch of...
You got update on the dumpster issue? Is dumpster gone?
I believe so. They should have that house finished in two to three weeks.
I'm sorry.
They should have that house completed in two to three weeks.
Good.
I guess you can't legislate being a good neighbor.
There you go. There you go. So, what's the board's position on this?
Believe it as is.
What's your recommendation?
Yes.
Alderman not?
For right now, I would think, yeah, leave it as is. Unless somebody can come up with a great solution, but that's another discussion.
Okay. I know where you stand, Alderman Dryer.
What exactly is it now, though? We have to get a permit?
With the building permit, you can have the dumpster there during construction.
That's usually not...
I think you should have to charge that about $100.
We can make it more difficult, too, though, and have different regulations for residential areas as opposed to commercials. I mean, because Memphis Church has had a dumpster out there now for...
If you do it with permits, and if you want to do it where they put a fence around it, you can't have a fence in the front of your property anyway, so you would be able to put a fence around it.
Well, I would, I mean, obviously, the permit would allow you to put, and then you would have regulations on what type of temporary fence you could have. It would be a temporary structure fence or whatnot.
Alderman Flake?
Unless you put a sign on it, then you're screwed.
It's getting confusing.
Leave it as is, I guess, for the time being, until we come up with something better.
Alderman Cornell?
I've just got a headache at this point.
You want to talk about it?
I've got no comment.
I say we table this discussion.
This was a table discussion.
It's permanently tabled at this point.
Want to kick the can down the road?
No, no.
Yeah, kick it down the road for somebody.
I'm entertaining motion, which way to go, the board wants to go.
Let's just move on with no action.
Let's just move on with no action.
Move on with no action? You make that motion?
You don't need to make a motion, we just need to move to next agenda.
Yeah, I think it's.
No action taken.
No action taken?
Yeah.
Is that where you stand on it?
Yes.
The board happy, or they can live with that? No action taken at this time? All right, we're moving on.
Talk about more signs.
Yep, more signs.
Amended agenda items, request to extend banner permit for cocoa vapors. Does someone here want to address cocoa vapors?
I'm not sure she wants to.
Two stars, I really can't believe her either.
Next time, address the public at the very beginning.
Would you state your name for the record?
My name's Lisa Cullen. And I would, I'd like to request an extension on my banner that I have above my storefront. I have ordered a permanent sign and it's taken a little longer than I thought it would. I got an email from Ziegler Signs and it'll be completed on 11/14 and they're going to install it the next day, on the 15th. So I need a couple more weeks.
So this is your second extension?
Yes.
Okay, so you're asking for another, what, 14?
Yeah. The letter from Corporate Group, my landlord asked to extend it, or approved to extend it to the 18th, just in case we'd had bad weather or something.
Make a motion, we authorize the extension of the sign to the 18th.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Off, second by Alderman Clark to approve the extended banner for cocoa vapors to the 18th of November. Any further discussion?
I think I'm going to start smoking these things.
Pardon me?
Nothing.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alder Person Kessler, yes.
Yes.
Alderman Off?
Yes.
Motion carried six to nothing, your banner's been approved.
That wasn't so bad.
Karen's starting to talk to herself up here. Item 12, Brad Bozzi Cruz, Ground and Maintenance Director, report.
Good evening, I have requested the approval of the, of a slide for Cory Lake to replace one that we had some wear and vandalism to. Unfortunately, the slide that's, that we have there is no longer available, but, excuse me, the one we have is the one that replaces it on this particular, excuse me, this particular slide now, so.
Is that the one here that's marked a rumble seat?
It's actually what it's called, but it's a wavy one coming down.
I was thinking of a old car.
Yeah, well, I've seen it, I feel, but it is the same, it's the same slide, it's just a double slide, just like the one it is, the ones there now, just made a little bit.
Is this in our budget or is this?
This is coming out of the park contingency fund.
And Brad, the vandalism, was that new vandalism?
All right, some of it was from wherever they were starting to come through and it looks like the kids just jumped on it and.
Okay.
Finished it off.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve the spending of $2,012 for a new slide.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Clark, second by Alderman Cornell to approve the replacement slide for Cory Park in an amount of $2,012. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alder Person Kessler, yes. Alderman Off?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Next I have is the safe slide invoice, the one that we had the question about, the extra, the 4,000, I called him, some discussion there, gave him, actually, I went back, remeasured the square footage of it and the bill went to $1,820 plus he is extending the warranty another six months, so we have an 18th month warranty on the, on the slides.
When you say you remeasure?
I went over, they had, they had, the square footage they had was different than what I thought it was, so I went back, remeasured it and come to find out I had the right measurement, so.
But this was, he came down significantly on the bill.
Yes, from 4,000 to 1,800.
You think this is reasonable for the work?
Yeah, for what he did, yes it is, yes.
Make a motion to approve the safe slide invoice for $1,820.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Off, second by Alderman Kessley to approve the safe slide invoice for $1,820. If there's no further discussion, I have a roll call vote.
One, one quick comment.
Sure.
I do appreciate, Brad, the fact that this is, even though you're a city resident, you pay city taxes, this is not coming out of your wallet or your checkbook. I appreciate the fact that you're making sure that we're not overpaying for the services that we are receiving. Thank you.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alder Person Kessler?
Yes.
Alderman Off?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Next I have is the Morgan Park retaining wall project. The, what I'm asking for is another $9,800 out of the capital sales tax contingency fund. The reason we have this, the project was budgeted at 10,000, we were going to use B blocks. Well, this project's, I think this is, at the year, last year when we bid it, this would have taken care of it, but in the meantime, they found out that the B blocks will not, are not made to withstand the retaining wall like we initially were going to, they've had them collapse. One of them is like what Greg Costello had on his lot next to the train tracks, why it kept falling over. Well, they figured out that they just, they're great for freestanding, like what we have down for our salt in, our cinders in down shed, but not for actually having dirt pushed up against them and they just don't, they just don't hold up, so.
Is there the area around the tennis courts?
Yes, it's the area around the tennis court, down, by the sidewalk going down and then along the front of Morgan Street. There's going to be a section there that will have some of it on there.
So you're basically going to build a retaining wall and do it that way?
Basically what we were going to do before, but we actually haven't used a different type of material.
You're going to pour a, pour a retaining wall?
No, this will be a block one also, but it's going to be a little bit, it's going to be made, these blocks are made for retaining walls, you can stack them up there, actually stair step back with rock behind it, that, and then we're also going to pour a concrete between the retaining wall and the tennis court, so we got an area where we can put probably some benches or some picnic tables down there where the people can sit now instead of the mulch and stuff like we were going to have.
I make a motion that we approve the additional $9,800 from the capital sales tax contingency fund in order to cover this project to actually do it correctly.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Kessley, seconded by Alderman Cornell to approve the Morgan Park retaining wall project in an amount of $9,800. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Did you say 9,800 or 19,800?
It's an additional 9,800.
9,800.
Ten was already approved. Well, you probably need to approve the.
Need to approve the whole thing.
For a total of 19,800.
Okay, is that what you said?
Yeah, that's what I said.
How the crap save city money?
Yes.
Alder Person Kessler, yes. Alderman Off?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Anything else, Brad?
One other thing, I think the historical society, they asked you all to do some homework for their hometown Christmas, if you all, if you all haven't finished that, get that back, they would like to see that.
We were supposed to come up with a toy or picture?
Something of, yeah, your Christmas that you remembered. If you have a picture or something of it or the actual item. I think John's mom is part of this. Yeah, or Jim's mom.
I took all my toys up within two weeks of Christmas. Took them apart, see what made them.
Lisa, I didn't pull that, I didn't get any toys.
We'll, we'll check with everybody on it, see how we're coming along.
I got a question for you, Brad. They're going to replace that slide for Morgan Park?
Yeah, I have it.
Big long ones?
Oh, no.
Not going to put none like that?
Alderman Flake, Alderman Flake, they didn't have Christmas.
Ask them about that.
Yeah, no, that one isn't going to be going.
And if they did, they had to walk 10 miles in the snow uphill.
All right, that it, Brad?
That's all I have, thank you.
We're going to, item 13, Terry Thorne, Director of Operations and Financial Officer.
My first item for you this evening is a request to pay the accounts payable from last month. The total is 321,734.05.
Do we have to approve the other one too?
That is the total. The other one is just your new ones.
Oh, that's including the 300?
Yes.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the bills for 321,734.05.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Off, seconded by Alderman Flake to approve the accounts payable bills in an amount of 321,734, and what was the cents?
Five, five cents.
Five cents, gotcha. Roll call, please.
Alder Person Kessler, yes. Alderman Off?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
And then I believe in your Dropbox, you had the financial report for the period ending September 30th. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Well, I mean, to me, what I noticed, right away, this is the first month since the beginning of the year that we actually exceed the prior year sales tax. Does it, we, 100, no, 263,000 compared to 250,000 last September, and the prior two months, they'd been below the prior year, so.
They were below, and if you look at last month, it's really interesting how it fluctuates because last month we were significantly below. When we've investigated these things before, it's difference in timing of when certain payments are received at the state and when they get those payments turned around to us. So I'm afraid to believe that we're on that much of an upswing until I see next month's payment.
I always hope that last month we won't have much of a downswing because that is quite a drop.
Not good, but, you know, perhaps we are on the upswing and that's what the hope is, but the payments do fluctuate considerably from month to month.
Any other questions for Terry? What else you have, Terry?
That's all.
That's it? I'm ready for Michelle Smither, Economic Development's report.
First thing I have for you this evening is the Economic Development Update.
How we coming on Kentucky Fried Chicken? Are there any new prospects for that building?
Actually, I did have someone call me this week and he is interested in the building.
Great.
Not necessarily for KFC, he won't tell me who he was working for, but is looking at that location and has other locations as well.
Good, well, that should encourage you.
Yes. There's no other comments. Move on to Hometown Christmas. Hometown Christmas is a WDA event that will be December 6, which is a Friday, be from 5:30 to 8:30 PM, and here at City Hall, we will have the reindeer again and sleigh or pictures with the reindeer and sleigh. We will be having hot cocoa and cookies with that as well. And I need to notice the board going to do the float and ride in the float. I haven't heard a whole consensus of if you guys plan on fixing the float up and riding it, I need to let the WDA know.
Board?
What time is the party?
It would start probably right about 6 o'clock.
We had, I think the entire board participated last year, didn't we?
Yep.
I can't imagine why they wouldn't want to.
It was fine. I may, I may not be able to, our office has been approached by WDA about participating in the chili cook-off, so we're going to have an entry there, so I may be tied up with that, but if not, I'll.
You can do both, I did last year.
What's that?
I did both last year.
You did both last year, then I'll be the counterfeiter.
Do you guys have a date that you would like to work on the float? Or have an idea for your float?
What did Brad have in mind? Whatever works with Brad's schedule.
You just tell us when and where to be and we'll see how many we can get.
Brad's got some carpentry skills.
And then the last thing I have for you this evening is the Chamber is having an Economic Development luncheon, and that is January 14. It starts at 11:45 at the Knights of Columbus Hall, which is at 700 South Street, and they have Christopher Chung, who is with Missouri Partnership, and Josh Brack of Community Edge there, and if you are interested in attending, please let me know and I can RSVP for anyone or you can RSVP yourself, but Jane would like a number for this event on who would be attending.
What day is that on? Wednesday? You can RSVP for me, Michelle.
Okay.
What was the time of it again?
It starts at 11:45.
Anything else for Michelle? Michelle, you have anything else?
I lied to you.
What is it?
Thank you. Recreation Director, Dottie Phillips.
Good evening. The first thing I have is the monthly report. It's got a couple of program updates and unless you have any questions about those things, that's really it with that.
I see the Hunter Safety Program went over pretty well.
Yes, that was a very successful program and it's a good program for us, it's a great community service and doesn't require a whole lot of staffing or anything on our end, so the Conservation Department takes care of that, we just provide a location.
Good, good. I just thought someone else in the community was offering that, that program. Didn't realize that we were the only one doing it? Or, I mean, the Conservation's doing it, but we were the only one hosting it?
Right, it was not being offered in Warrenton.
Good.
What's those, other questions on that? The next thing I have are some program summaries. These are just some programs that we've done that you haven't seen other reports on thus far, we don't really report on every single program to you, but these are just some of the other things that we've done.
Why is the Auto Fest has such a large loss? Do you want advertising?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Why is the Auto Fest has such a large loss due to advertising?
Advertising, the band and staffing.
Oh, so you've incorporated the expenses staff time? So the city wasn't out of pocket that full amount, although you probably paid overtime because it was on Saturday?
And actually, we did not have to pay overtime because we use recreation staff rather than, I think in the past, they've used other department staff, so we did not have to pay overtime.
Well, and the loss, Alderman Off, is funded through tourism. Tourism supports, Auto Fest is one of their events for the year. So whatever the loss is, is the amount of reimbursement that'll be received from tourism for the event.
We get value out of this? I mean, is it bang for the buck? I mean, you know, if you look at the cost of that, I mean, that's just a subjective question, I realize.
I had this, I had the same question asked here, but I think it really does draw quite a bit of people in from outside.
It just doesn't generate revenues. Well, revenues will be seen. Because the revenue so far is fees from people who show cars, is that what it is?
That is correct. The revenue are people who put cars in and then also a couple of vendors that we had. We are looking at some possible changes to that event that may, I don't think it's going to draw a whole lot more revenue, but definitely going to generate some more interest in the community. We're not ready to present that yet because we're trying to work out all the details and everything, but hopefully we'll have some, some things to bring forward that may bring in more people. Though I do, I will tell you, I was very impressed with the number of participants that was, that were there. I mean, it was very well attended.
I didn't have a chance to talk to them after this year's event, but after the previous year, the owners of Brewskis were extremely happy, they had their patio filled the entire evening for participants, so. Well, it shows that a report can't show you everything, I guess. Right, right. There's stuff to look at there.
So, anything else on these programs?
We're ready for the market report.
Okay. Downtown market, we have several different attachments to this. Basically, what, for me, what it comes down to is I'm looking at how is my time best spent? And is it best spent over a 17-week period to provide only 600 visitors with, you know, the market? And, you know, maybe it is. I personally think that we should try to find another organization to do it, which I have reached out to a couple of places and we haven't been successful, that we should dissolve the market and encourage them to work with the county farmer's market, which is in Wright City now. Or if we're going to continue, we do need, my opinion is that we need to fund it to provide a staff person that is solely dedicated to that market for that length of time. And there's a couple of reasons for that. One is because I do think that during that time period, my time could be spent in other areas that I believe are more beneficial to the community, but also I don't think that But also, I don't think that we're meeting the expectations of the vendors regardless to how much we put into it. I mean, it, you know, it did not matter how much we marketed it, it didn't matter how many times we went to them and asked them, what can we do, what can we do? It was never enough. And I think, you know, that's partially because frankly, I think that's not really a business for us to be in. I don't see where that's really a part of recreation. You know, I think it's more of a health and like Health Department through the county or something like that, but they are not interested. So, anyway, I've provided the report. Should we continue to do it in-house, then I have some recommendations for next year that I think that we need to look at. So I guess we're just looking for some direction from you all on how you would like for us to proceed with it.
I honestly wish we had another facility that we could do it in.
Former location.
It's a, yeah, it's a poor location, and I'm very guilty in that I'll be past the Baptist Church and go, oh darn, there was, you know, there was the market today, but I'm already going to the four-way stop.
You know, it's interesting because I felt that it was a poor location too, but in the evaluations by the vendors, they all liked the location and don't want it to change. I would say, I don't even know how many we got back, I can't remember, but probably five out of six of them thought the location was fine.
I mean, the facility is great, you know, the actual facility is a perfect place for this market. It's just getting your traffic down there is just very, very difficult.
So one of your suggestions was to find someone else to take over the market?
It was, but unfortunately, I have been trying to do that and I have not found any organization willing to do that. Now, have I asked a whole lot of people? No, I haven't. I've just looked at some options and asked what I thought was probably the most promising, which was the County Health Department. They have a, they're very interested in it, they do a lot of stuff with the county market that's in Wright City, but they weren't interested in taking it over. So, basically, to just, I guess, put it out there is my recommendation is we don't do it anymore, whether that be somebody else do it, or it just doesn't happen, I don't know.
Maybe a 4-H group or something like that would, you know, are the FFA students at school or something like that? We might need to ask some of those people. When the market first started this year, I thought we were wasting our time and energy and efforts also, but as, and I'm a frequent visitor of the market, I mean, I try to go down leash every Saturday and buy something. But as the season went along, I noticed the vendors that, the same vendors were there every Saturday, and they kind of developed a little cohesiveness and were more enthusiastic about the market and the, in fact, toward the end of the season, they were really concerned that we might close it down altogether for this coming year, so I have some concern about that. But I guess my first choice would be if we could find another person to take over the downtown market and, you know, provide the pavilion for them. And I don't know who that is.
Well, and definitely those first few weeks, nobody had anything to grow up.
They had nothing to sell?
Yeah, no, so then it wasn't very productive.
So where do we want to go on this? Where's the board?
I would like to see the market continue.
Continue.
In one form or another. I think we've spent an awful lot of money just to drop it after one or two bad years. We're just now starting to see a little bit, actually, we're just now starting to see a little bit of a growth.
Mm-hmm.
But it's something I think the city needs to provide, and plus, we spent an awful lot of money on a pavilion.
Well, it's good use of the pavilion, I mean, it's a good spot.
Well, that's what the pavilion is.
Pavilion's good, it's low emissions. If we can move the pavilion, it'd be better.
We can move it to the state right away and just have, since the weekend, they don't care.
Don't go there.
Leave any fruit and vegetables there, they can claim it.
All of them, Dyer, Alderman Flack, do you all have a feel for the market?
Well, I guess there's a lot of people that, there are quite a few people that use it. I don't use it that much, but we got some time until spring to think about it a little bit. Maybe we can find somebody or some organization that wants to run it.
I would like to see that we continue that brainstorming of finding somebody.
So we got all winter to look for that first?
There you go.
You live with that?
Mm-hmm.
Or not?
I like my idea better, but that's okay.
I like your idea.
We're in table here, I do.
You make the worst of it.
We'll both try to identify a group that may be interested in.
Okay, very good.
Thanks, Dottie.
The next item I have for you, at this point, is really just sort of an informational thing. We have been still working with the school district to try to get some sort of a shared use facilities agreement so that we can start some basketball volleyball leagues. That would be where we would start at with those two leagues. They actually have the agreement in their hands now. I spoke to the athletic director and he said that it has been forwarded on to their attorneys to review, and he is expecting to hear back from them this week. So, that's where we're at with this.
So we really don't need to have any action done on that?
No, as I said, more than anything, it was just sort of an informational item for you so that you know that we're moving forward with it, trying to get it, you know, we have the agreement drafted and ready to run with it, we're just waiting for them to.
Councilor Bill, did you see any issues with that agreement?
I made, we revised it.
Revised.
It was similar to what Winsfield used, and we made changes. Terry looked at it, Dottie looked at it, so we were comfortable with what we submitted to the district. I'm sure if their attorneys are gonna review it, they're gonna come back with some changes.
I understand.
No other questions regarding that?
I'm happy. I've been pushing for that for a year and a half now.
Yeah, we're hoping that if it goes through, we're gonna be able to start a league in January for basketball.
Wow, that'd be awesome.
But it's, we're pushing our time limit at this point, so.
Yeah, that'd be awesome.
Have you also talked to Holy Rosary about use of their facility?
I'm sorry, who?
Have you also talked to Holy Rosary about use of their facility?
We have not talked to Holy Rosary. I think our first step was trying to work with the school district to see if we could get something going there. And the only thing we were able to accomplish there was the use of the gymnasium. They won't allow us to use any other facilities in the schools. We had hoped to get some multipurpose rooms and things like that, but they're not willing to take that step yet. So now, I think, once we kind of get this going, our next step would be to try to identify some other locations to do those type of things, plus some adult programs. We cannot use the school programs for adult programs, so we are gonna need to try to identify another place with a gym for some adult programs in the future.
My understanding is Holy Rosary's basketball league, they don't have much gym time available.
Because I know Special Olympics uses in other places.
But that's usually after.
Next item was the brochure printing.
Yes, this was actually budgeted for in our budget, and we sent out requests for bids trying to get several different options. Messenger printing and a graphic resource were the only two that provided us with what we were really looking for, the quality of what we're looking for, and gave us an extra bid on it. So, the thing to note, I think, on here is a graphic resource did not actually provide all of the information as far as the cost of mailing and everything, so it appeared that theirs is cheaper, but really it isn't. That cost of mailing is going to be pretty much the same across the board. So, kind of reverted back to what the actual cost of the production of the guide was, and that puts messenger printing out of St. Louis, Missouri as the low bidder.
Did we advertise this for bids in the paper? Yes?
I'm sure we did. Did we not?
Actually, this is, this actually, this one falls below the, whatever the.
So we just sent it out?
Yes, we sent it.
To the vendor list?
Yes.
And my only question would have been, I don't, I guess I can say this with him, Missourian Publishing out of Washington is also a vendor. I don't know if we sought a bid for them. Again, it's not a huge amount, the 1,700, it just always states when we only have one bid to consider.
And there's the other one, the one, oh, let's see, the Three Stars, did they give an indication of why they didn't want to bid on it?
No, actually, Jared made those phone calls for me and he said that the person was pretty blunt and said they did not want to do business with the city and hung up.
Okay, I would like to find out why. I know, on this, I know I had, I've already had a lot of work done with these brochures and stuff, and I've had good luck with J&amp;M Printing out of Moscow Mills and Paper Leaf Printing out of Winsfield. So these things haven't gone out to different people. I'm a little bit like what you said, John, one bid is, this might be a very, very good bid, I don't know, but I, I'm like you, I hate seeing one bid on this, and it is not that much money, but not seeing, just seeing one bid seems on something like this.
So is your request to rebid it?
I don't know if it's worth it or not.
When do you want to mail this out? Is this gonna be like a spring mailing or?
Actually, no, this is, our first brochure is supposed to go out to the public in January, which would mean we'd be early December getting the information to the publisher.
But the intent of the article, the issue is to tell people about the upcoming spring activities in the city and what's available for the summer, is that the?
It would be Janu, this issue of it would be January through May, and then our next issue would be June through December. So it would be, we actually do have some winter programs that would be affected by delaying it, January, the basketball program, if we get that together. We have some Valentine programs, and then we have some other programs that we had planned on doing.
So we might be crowding you to rebid that?
Yes, we would be. I mean, you know, we can do it, but it would be pushing it. I personally think that the cost is very good that they quoted us. I mean, I think for an eight-page brochure with, you know, full color front and back plus some color on the inside, a little bit of color, that's a pretty good price for $3,000 brochures.
Need a motion? What you want to do?
I'll make a motion to approve the bid of $1,741 for messenger printing.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Cornell, second by Alderman Flack to approve the printing bid from messenger printing in the amount of $1,741. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flack?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Preston-Castlin?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0.
I would strongly urge that on things like this, especially if you don't put it out in the paper.
Yeah.
We need to get more than one bid. This is, it doesn't look right just getting one bid from one place that meets what your criteria. I think you really need to either put it out in the paper and let everybody see it, or get more bids.
Okay.
Especially local, I like to see local bids as much as possible.
Okay, I apologize. I think basically we did try to follow the policy to some place, and unfortunately, we just didn't get the response from them.
And I think you need to find out why Three Stars was so firm about not wanting to work with the city.
Okay.
Because we need to find out why our businesses don't want to work with us.
The policy that you have in front of you is, basically, it's very similar to what has always been in place, but we went in and tried to simplify it a little bit because there were like four and five different pages that were, it wasn't a policy, it wasn't a policy format. It was sheets of paper that went to different places, and so we brought it all together and tried to establish fees. There is no, there is no change in fees. We now have a refund policy in place specifically for pavilions, which we didn't have in the past. There was no time limits or anything on refunds. There was, but they weren't in a policy format. So, we've put that in place, and then also, the pavilion rules have, there's been a couple of minor changes, such as confetti-type materials are strictly prohibited, and that's because it becomes a cleanup issue when you get those little sparkly confetti things all over, and Brad's guys have to go out there and try to clean that stuff up. And then, you know, places like Dinkley, those type of things can be an issue for the wildlife. We also have added the alcohol beverage permits information to this, and then there's just some other general information as far as what's available in all the parks, what we can offer, and kind of what our ability to do is, so.
Who of staff has reviewed this?
This was directed by myself, reviewed by Brad and Terry and Chris.
Okay, so. Does the place have any interest in reviewing it, or it's people in the parks you have to enforce sometimes?
So we just added the alcohol part to it, really that applies to the police department? Is that correct?
Yeah, and actually, it's not a change. The alcohol permit policy was already approved at a previous meeting. This was just putting it into the policy for the rentals so that people know that if they're going to do that, they have to have a permit. So it wasn't a change in any enforcement, it was just included in this policy.
Does, do policies like this tie specifically to ordinance? Because I'm looking at other information, dogs are permitted at city parks but should be on leases at all, leashes at all time. Should be is kind of a.
They are required to be.
Yeah, so the policy isn't very, if the ordinance says they should, they have to be on lease, this, the reader of this would go, well, it should be, but it doesn't necessarily have to be. You see what then enforce.
Should.
Yeah, and then somebody could come back and say, well, how come you're taking me to court? Why do I have to pay a penalty? Because here it says it should be, it doesn't say it has to be. So is there some inconsistencies there, or am I overthinking this?
Well, what we do is, we have an ordinance that basically delegates to Brad and Dottie the power to make the day-in, day-out rules for like the pavilion and pool and whatnot for the specific facilities so we can tailor. I don't think there's any question that should, should be, shall be on a leash in that particular circumstance, and we can make that correction on it, but it should be definitive black and white, so they know when they're violating the rules, they know when they're not.
Yeah, so can we postpone this till next meeting and just kind of go and see if there's any other should, shall, shall issues that need to be looked at? Because to me, I would probably let my dog run a little bit and say.
Just to come on, right?
No, I didn't say it have to, it says it should, but then say, you know.
I would have mine on the leash.
Well, I don't own a dog, so I guess it's, it's a theoretical discussion at this point.
So you don't want to do anything on this?
Well, I mean, I don't know if there's other issues in there or if that's just the only one.
We're comparing.
Okay. Because it needs to be clear, if the public's gonna try to behave a certain way, they need to fully understand this is what it is.
Okay. Any other concerns? All right. How about the renow line policy?
Yes, this policy, this is actually a whole new policy, and basically, we get a lot of questions about when the hotline should be updated, what the hotline should say, we should be, you know, lots of different issues that come up with the sports leagues on this. So we basically created the policy to establish a clear method of communication for distributing the information.
Do you need board approval on that?
Yes, it's the policy, yes.
Any concerns on the renow policy from the board? Not an entertaining motion.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Alderman Flack, second by Alderman Cornell to approve the renow line policy. All of them in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise? Motion carried 6-0. Anything else, Dottie?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
On item 16, bills to ordinance, I don't know if the board needs an explanation, or did Jack kind of give you all enough explanation on why we're doing this ordinance?
He told me when I walked in the room, I didn't know. I don't know if anybody else knows.
I do.
Okay. The situation came up. I, I, the, the situation came up when we had a complaint on the, the business sign on forty-seven, why had it been there so long? It was a temporary sign and it exceeded its ninety-day time limit on a temporary sign. So when they got to check in over, over our ordinances on that in the RC one, RC two, there's supposed to be no signs in that district, and I think Councilor Rebel can probably expound on that even more, but it needs to go back to planning and zoning and, and meet the legal requirements. So we're asking for a moratorium not to enforce the sign ordinance until it...
Just the temporary signs in the RC district, so that, for example, and not to get into another sign discussion, but so the, the temporary signs in all the other districts on Highway forty-seven on the property can go up just for a time period because we didn't realize that, we weren't enforcing it, and so basically, we can send it to P and Z, have them look at it, study it, give a report back to you to do it, or to, to make a recommendation on it.
And does that include the highway right-of-way, the state right-of-way?
Just not including the highway right-of-way there.
So, so when this was, the zone was drafted years ago, we didn't allow any temporary signs. We had very strict permanent sign ordinance because I drafted it, it was mine.
Right.
So anything you fixed, you fixed my mistake. So, and the idea was to keep it very clean, but since then, we've allowed temporary, our businesses, the temporary stuff on. So this is kind of like a moratorium until zoning can figure out what to really do.
Figure out exactly what they want to do, and the problem, and it gets even more complicated because there's a statute that says you have to allow a certain size real estate sign on a property. So where, our ordinance doesn't comply with state statute, but I think there's a problem now with the statute after the A. Servant case. So we just want to try to get a standard sign, temporary in nature, content neutral, that complies with state statute but doesn't go, you know, to say specifically real estate.
So Jack's point to me was, if a business was going to sell their property, they couldn't put up a...
Right.
For-sale sign on their property.
Which would violate statute, but the statute's probably not enforceable after the A. Servant case. I don't know who would challenge that, you know, but it, it's just trying to, signs, getting them all figured out.
Oh, if it's going to be challenged, it's going to be challenged in the city warrant.
Definitely. So I have a, I have a solution for the ladies at the Artisan Guild who were told that they can't have their temporary sign up. My suggestion, tell me if this is good advice, my suggestion was put in the back of a pickup and park it on the street. Now, what we do, is that enforceable?
The, the...
We do have the political signs, right? We allow people to put them in vehicles and park them anywhere we want to.
Derek, I, I would hesitate to give a direct answer on this spot on that ultimate.
Okay, well, that was my ultimate advice.
Or they could spin the sign around and have somebody standing there with it too. Is that a sign or, you know?
Is it just a person wearing a sign?
A person wearing a sign or holding a sign or, you know, I mean, that, that, I mean, that, that's the other thing with the directional signs, they could have somebody standing there with the directional sign, the right-of-way.
Signs, signs, everywhere is signs.
But yeah, I mean, there's limitations on what you can do with a moving vehicle.
Entertaining motion for first reading of Bill forty-seven dash thirteen.
Make a motion for the first reading of Bill forty-seven thirteen.
Second. Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Clark for first reading of Bill forty-seven dash thirteen.
In ordinance of the city of Orange, Missouri, approving a forty-five day moratorium on the enforcement of temporary sign limitations within the RC one and RC two zoning districts.
Call for second final reading and passage of Bill number forty-seven dash thirteen.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Dryer for second and final reading and passage of Bill number forty-seven dash thirteen.
In ordinance of the city of Orange, Missouri, approving a forty-five day moratorium on the enforcement of temporary sign limitations within the RC one and RC two zoning districts.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flank?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Person Castorley?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. The, the next bill, number forty-eight dash thirteen, I'm, I'm sure everybody's up on the using stacks that we agreed to put that on the ordinance forum last meeting. So, I'll entertain a motion for first reading of forty-eight dash thirteen.
Call for the first reading of ordinance forty-eight thirteen.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Clark for first reading of Bill number forty-eight dash thirteen.
In ordinance imposing a use tax for general revenue purposes at the rate of one point seven five percent pursuant to the authority granted by and subject to the provisions of Sections one four four point six zero zero through one four four point seven six one RSMO, providing for the use tax to be repealed, reduced, or raised in the same amount as any city sales taxes repealed, reduced, or raised, and providing for submission of the proposal to the qualified voters of the city for their approval at the general election called and to be held in the city on April eighth, two thousand fourteen.
Call for the second final reading and passage of Bill number forty-eight dash thirteen.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Dryer for second and final reading and passage of Bill number forty-eight dash thirteen.
In ordinance imposing a use tax for general revenue purposes at the rate of one point seven five percent pursuant to the authority granted by and subject to the provisions of Sections one four four point six zero zero through one four four point seven six one RSMO, providing for the use tax to be repealed, reduced, or raised in the same amount as any city sales taxes repealed, reduced, or raised, and providing for the submission of the proposal to the qualified voters of the city for their approval at the general election called and to be held in the city on April eighth, two thousand and fourteen.
Roll call.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flank?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Person Castorley?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. This time I entertain a motion to move to executive session to discuss litigation and personnel.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Flake to move to executive session to discuss litigation and personnel. Roll call, please.
Alderman Flank?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Person Castorley?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.